All right, we will call the meeting to order. This is the special meeting, the budget evaluation team for Tuesday, May 14. Notice the meeting was properly posted on May the 9th. Item number one, discussion of possible action regarding the minutes of May 7. We have a motion on the minutes.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of May 7. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item two, discussion of possible action regarding an update on employee benefits. John? All right, without objection, the chair will ask the clerk to make the document that was just passed out. It says, "May to June 4010 Employee Benefit Testament," a part of the record. All right, John, go ahead.
Sure, I just emailed this out to everyone before the meeting too. And this is just an update, kind of a snapshot. I did a snapshot last week of where we were at. I looked at what's been paid, kind of estimated what was going to come in, still to be paid. This week, I did another estimate based on what's happened between those periods. What we know has come in is a big medical claim is registered, almost $600,000, so that kind of skews it. So, the May section shows what's still outstanding, some prescription claims. And then I pushed the last claim register on 5/29 into June. So, with what we have outstanding for this month, it looks like we'll need about $30,000 more based on that new medical claims register that came in. It's way above the average, what we usually average. So I think the BET approved $450,000, I think we need at least $30,000 more to get through May. And I've got an agenda item on the board for later. But that's just totally based on averages and then bill larger than expected claim register coming in. It was loaded with lots of small claims, lots of, lots of, lots of claims.
Now with the higher one, that $599,000, that obviously brings our weekly average up higher as well.
It does.
So it's going down into, okay, I see.
It does, yeah, I updated that.
368, 371, so it's already, okay.
Yeah, I updated that to the new average. So it kind of is what it is. They're not fixed expenses, they're variable expenses. Some of them kind of average the same, week to week, month to month, but of course, medical and prescription claims vary. But that's just based, May's a snapshot based on what we know right now, that kind of what is expected to come in the door.
Do you have any forecast for June? That's not pushing anything into next fiscal?
It is, it is now. So, on this one, what's been updated is we pushed the last weeks of medical claims, because it fell on 5/29, so it's almost into June. Pushed that into June on this estimate. And then I pushed, because usually we receive prescription claims, we prepay for those. So typically, they would bill those in June for July, I pushed those into July. So back on, I think, the 4/14 meeting, I said we'll need about $2 million, it looks like 2.2, just based on averages total, extra, depending on what we can push into the next fiscal year.
So my understanding is that we're still going to be close to $975,000 short?
Correct.
And that, that's already counting, so you received the $450,000 transfer?
Yeah, included that in the May revenue.
Yeah. I'm just hoping I didn't read it right.
You're correct, so, you know, back, back in April, I said about $2 million, it's about 2.2, returning towards that. You know, I've been watching out for large claims. That register recently had a lot of, just a lot of different claims, and not too many large ones. So hopefully, the next ones we'll receive will be smaller, closer to our average.
Well, if they're not closer to the average, then the 1.8 is going to go up even higher.
Oh, yeah.
So, we're going to have to be way under average at this point to not have to find something, because we got, if, I mean, you'd said approved, BET doesn't approve anything, we just make recommendations. But if Budget Board were to approve the recommendation of the $450,000 on a transfer, that leaves $229,000 in reserve, which is not near enough to cover the remaining $1.9 million. I'm stating the obvious.
So just as a reminder, the Board transferred $1 million. The request for $450,000 is pending, obviously. So that would bring us to about 2.2 total.
But that's for May, right?
Yes.
Assuming the $450 is approved, you're only looking for?
$30,000 for this, per May.
Plus this.
Plus that, yeah.
We're only looking for $970.
$974.
I know, right?
How much, where were we at this past year? Do we remember?
You passed the hat by 2.5.
Remember 2.5?
We transferred total of $4.25 extra million in the account. If this prediction ends up correct, it'll be about $2.2 million transfers versus $4.25 last, that's weird. That's all I have.
Thank you.
We're here, maybe some time, maybe we'll get there.
Yeah.
Do you tell everybody not to go to the doctor?
Crazy what a week makes difference.
I would maybe not receive this report.
This is a good time to see what happens if we all both know. We'll just go away.
Does anybody have any bright ideas?
I think we're going to have to pass the hat. We don't have anything else.
That's kind of where I was going.
The question is timing.
Where, where?
Give it a few more weeks, or timing.
I've pretty much already told my elected that that's what we're going to have to do.
Yeah.
I mean, we see the writing on the wall here.
Same.
I wonder, I can't remember the timing last year, but we actually did it. But didn't we have the discussion of looking at everybody's benefits first?
Just to get an idea, for informational purposes, I mean, it wouldn't be any kind of a revenue failure, assessment, or anything like that. It would just be to make the case to not transfer money from, recommend to the Budget Board to not transfer benefit revenue that they were budgeted to some other purpose. And to have a good idea of what that is, yeah.
And see what, what's out there in fringe that people put to laps.
So do we want to make a recommendation to Budget Board this week to increase that $450 by the $31,000 out of reserve and give us a little bit of time to look at individual budgets and see if there is anticipated non-expended benefit dollars that folks could volunteer up to be the first line of funding source for a potential pass the hat? And then, from, after that analysis is done, then we can move other directions if we need to, if there's not enough money and/or willingness to voluntarily do that. I mean, there's not enough time before Budget Board to do that.
Right.
This week, of course. So the other option is just to roll with the $450 and have Budget Board have a special meeting before the end of the month to address the pass the hat and include the $30,000 in with the other.
Well, I think if we already know about this 30, why don't we go ahead and include?
That's what I think.
And we were doing just one month from that.
Mm-hmm, right.
Precisely what that is. We already know that number.
Right.
Let's take care of that. So I'd amend our recommendation of transferring $450,000 from reserve to benefits, increasing it by $31,000.
You go higher than that.
I go higher, yeah. Because you've got a week of, and you've still got estimates on the last one that we don't have yet. What do you think? 50, maybe another 50?
25.
But it's up to Mr. Nelson.
That's my motion. I agree to buy an additional $50,000.
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to increase our recommendation by $50,000, which would yield a recommendation from BET to Budget Board to transfer a total of $500,000 from reserve to employee benefits. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, it's habit. Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Did that knock our reserve plus $1,000?
$179.
$179. $179, 738. Well, while we are tackling these kinds of issues, if you guys don't mind, let's go ahead and jump down. Juvenile has a few items here. Item number nine, item number...
10, 11, 12.
10, 11, and 12. Nine is a request for us to make recommendation, Budget Board, transfer $55,000 from General Fund Reserve to Juvenile Detention M&amp;O budget.
So, I've shared a little bit of this with Cody, but normally, you guys hear from me way earlier than me, so I apologize for that. We're in the process of some personnel changes in that department, and when we went to go do that, found some expenses that we are working through. So, food costs mainly this year, I'm sure you guys have seen that in the grocery store, but every one of our food vendors has gone off contract. We cannot purchase food on contract. They will make an order for 30 items and we might get three of those at the contract price. And they just say, "Sorry, we can't fulfill it," because they can't make their ends meet to give it to us at those costs. So, we've had to go pretty much completely off contract. I know some of you know this because you watch our population, but I'm at 90% population all the time now. I have no female beds as of this minute. So, it's just one of those things where population has been real high over the last month. Food costs have been overwhelming, and so we're in the process of, I've hired a new business manager, our current business manager is retiring, and I've hired a new business manager who will start, you know him, his name is Grant, but he'll, he'll start on the 21st. So, just working through that transition, but I am a bit here with my hat in my hand a little bit, saying, "Hey, we're, as we're doing this transition, we are working through some of those issues." So, with M&amp;O for utilities specifically, 55 is a conservative estimate. I am, but I wanted to let you guys know as soon as possible that that need was there. So, when we get through the next couple of weeks, that number may be lower, but it, it may be close to that. We, utilities have been kicking our butt this year as well, so.
So you don't need this money right now?
Not today, but obviously, we're very close to June. So, I didn't want to wait any longer at all. As soon as I knew, I wanted to get it on for you guys on the, on the agenda. But that's to cover our food costs and our utilities. The other items on your agenda, the $22,000 is just the reimbursement you guys are getting for the dishwasher that we did the grant for. Nikki talked about it, has been talking about it in P&amp;G, and I think in here as well. We applied for the grant, received the grant, we are just waiting on the reimbursement for that. We went, I think, $1,900 over, because by the time we went to buy the dishwasher, it was more expensive than, of course, the three months prior when we had submitted the grant. The fact that we went over on that, they have held our reimbursement until the very end to see if they can give us the full amount versus just what we were awarded, which I appreciate very much, but at the same time, it's kind of like, you could go ahead and give it to us, we could utilize it.
We need the money.
So that amount of money is not actually a request from General Fund Reserve, you guys are getting that coming, and that, that money goes back to you in General Fund Reserve. Whenever that reimbursement comes in, it does not come to me, it goes to General Fund.
Well, but it doesn't go into General Fund Reserve.
Correct, I'm sorry.
It just goes into General Fund, so we...
The child nutrition account. It goes back to your, the, the line item is child nutrition, but it goes to General Fund, it doesn't come to me.
Right. But it's also not available for us to reallocate, so not this fiscal year. What we've done in the past, like the sheriff has a SCAP grant, and if they need those funds in that fiscal year, then we'll receive it in to General Fund, and it just sits there, but we have money in the reserve, and we go ahead and transfer that out to them during the fiscal year so they can actually utilize those dollars. But our reserve doesn't go up to be able to, to give that.
I know when, I know, I asked specifically before we applied for the grant, is this something that, so when it comes back to General Fund, then it can just get reallocated? And both Chantel and Nikki said there wouldn't be a problem with that. I'm sure you're accurate, I, I don't know the specifics on how.
It depends on if it's going into the General Fund, or if it's going into one of the special revenue accounts. If it's going into a special revenue account, it's going to be different, right? But if it's going into General Fund, then without us reopening the budget and...
Sure.
You know, accounting for that revenue, we couldn't...
Reallocate.
Reallocate, it would just be built into the budget for the next year that we didn't reallocate. So, for the sheriff's office, this is kind of what we do, is, you know, they won't have as much lapse, but we give it to them now.
Right.
So it's kind of a wash.
Right.
But we're fronting the money, is basically the way it works. But in your M&amp;O, because these other two are for capital and for salary.
Yes.
Your $55,000 is what you need to cover potential expenses.
Yes.
If you, if you got this $22,000, that would offset that 55, right?
So the 22 would be, we have the fourth floor chiller that is on, that I put for your, on the watch list. We also have a chiller out in detention. With me moving, I have several items to move, money from travel, money from all of my other accounts to help as much as I possibly can out of all my other sources. That will repair the chiller in detention that's over the day runs.
Okay.
So that, that's what that capital request is for. Now again, we're, we have fair weather right now, so that is something that, when it gets hot, will be an emergent problem, but right now, weather is fair, again, I, it'll be a week-to-week watch.
Hannah, let me ask you a question on 10.
Yes.
I assume at the very beginning, well, September supplement for '22, '23, we didn't budget 22, we didn't budget in General Fund to get this money this fiscal year.
No, that money, I, when the grant became available, we applied for it, is the only reason I would have requested that money.
And basically?
Otherwise, I wouldn't have had it.
Okay, so we didn't have it on the revenue side, and then on the expense side, we didn't budget for you to have money to buy this, waiting...
Correct.
So you basically used $22,058 of other M&amp;O expenses or whatever to buy it.
Correct.
Knowing we applied for the grant.
Yes.
So that's what Cody's saying.
Yes, that's what that 22 is.
Is it going to offset the 55?
Uh, it...
See what I'm saying?
Yes.
So you're, you're saying, "I'm low, I need $55,000 for M&amp;O."
But I would have had that 22, correct.
Okay.
And that, the 22, the reason why I'm asking capital and not M&amp;O is just for that chiller.
And, and what Cody's saying, if we didn't put it on the revenue side?
Correct.
By September supplement?
That 55 would have been 30.
Well, no, the 22, if, if we had budgeted for it, and it came in on June 15th, we could use it.
Yes.
But we didn't.
Correct.
So when this comes in, it really can't be allocated this year anyway.
Okay, yeah, I, I was told that it could, but I don't know the answer to that.
But if it's going into the child nutrition account, which I think is a special revenue...
That is a revenue that you all get consistently, that they, they cut those checks, but again, I, that's out of my wheelhouse.
And that could be a different, the way that account is set up, it could be different to where that would be available this year. And so, I think...
I wonder what the timing is anyways, it might be a new point. If we're not going to get it by June 30th, it doesn't matter what account it's going to be.
When we applied for it, I specifically asked, like, "What's the lead time?" I was told like four to six weeks, that it was very, very fast. Well, obviously, the dishwasher was more expensive, so when we went over, then it was, they said, "Well, we're not going to give you the reimbursement yet, because we may be able to give it all to you," which was very kind and generous of them, but it also kind of made us go like, "We're waiting on all the other departments to submit all their invoices, all their other things before the Department of Education will then release that to us," because they're hoping to be able to fund the total, but at this point, it's kind of like, I would much rather eat that $2,100 and have that $22,000 versus than be able to fund the $24,000.
Well, let's, let's find out what account that is being reimbursed into.
Okay.
And then, once we know the account, then we can figure out what the availability is to use that. So if that money does come in this fiscal year, what we may be able to do, and where our reserve is, this may be what we have to do, is push the chiller until July 1.
Yes.
When you get your new budget, and then offset that 55 with the 22. And because you said it's food and utility, so if it is going into the child nutrition, then you'd be able to pay for food.
Right.
Out of that $22,000, just to kind of shuffle things around to get through the end of the fiscal year, maybe. But, I mean, you did, you came here and talked to us, and I had mentioned it, about the dishwasher, that you were doing that, and we understood that you were using your budget, and that we would try to, you know, if you came up short, you know, take a look at using reserve to reimburse that, so.
It never occurred to me that they would hold it.
And we also didn't anticipate that this late in the year, our reserve was going to be as low as it is.
Or that I'd be back up saying, "Hey, I need M&amp;O money as well."
Yeah, because we were talking $19,000, $20,000.
Yes.
So, so yeah, let, let's find out what account it is going into.
Absolutely.
When they think they're going to get it, and then we can kind of go from there. Like you said earlier, this is a June thing, you don't need the money to get through May, right? So I think we probably should add the 55 to the watch list and track it, but... Okay, then 11, item 11 is transfer in amount, I think, $20,000 for salaries?
Uh, that's just what I spoke to you about when I came with my estimated needs. My, so last fiscal year, even including the previous director's payout, our average payout was $6,000 a month. The past two pay periods, not, not including May's, April and March, I paid out over $70,000 in payouts. I've had multiple 20-plus-year employees leave, and the way our annual leave is set up, they were ones that had 472 hours, so paying all of that at a 20-year-plus rate was very, very expensive. I have another, my, my business manager leaving this month is, will be a substantial payout. My training manager, who was here 15 years, left in this pay period as well, and will be a substantial payout. So, again, I, we, I had no indication that we would need salary money, but then when we had that many payouts, that was not something that I could recoup. $80,000 was not something that I had in the, in the churn to recoup, regardless of how many detention vacancies I held. So, we have put a hold, we are not having another detention academy. Bruce is watching very, very closely to vacancies, but that also presents its own challenges, because we, you've seen the vicious cycle of what happens when we get low, so we're, we're going to work very, very hard not to have another detention academy until July, and then try and make it through without that so that we can, we can hold those. So we'll be, we'll be on hands, all hands on deck for a little bit with shift coverage and stuff like that, but we're, we're going to do everything we can to recoup that.
It does definitely make it difficult when you have the big payouts like that towards the end of the fiscal year.
Yes.
Because it really ties your hands as far as holding off on hiring positions to offset those additional costs, so it is unfortunate.
It's the same line of questioning, you'll be okay to make payroll for Matt?
Yes, yes.
And we had discussed this earlier, but your numbers have been in the high 60s, mid-to-high 60s and below 70s. You know, JA has contracted with us for 50 beds.
Correct.
So, we've, we've got to revisit that and figure that out, because it's their responsibility, 85% of those, so.
And we've even worked really, really hard to try and reduce that as much as we can. We actually had 40 kids out on our ankle monitor program, which has saved a lot, but unfortunately, it just meant that, kind of what we thought might be happening in the beginning is that our higher, we, we only are bringing in the highest level of vendors, kids that are a threat to themselves or others. And so, when we, there, it, it just goes to show that unfortunately, there were kids still out there that we couldn't bring in. And so, now that we've got, we've had up to 40 kids out on ankle monitor, which has been phenomenal, it's, it's saved as much money as we can on food costs and everything else. It only costs us $3.20 a day to have a kid out on monitoring versus the $140, $160 it costs us on any given day to have a kid in the detention center, depending on count. So, that, that has saved a little bit, but again, we're, we're kind of in that, that influx where we knew that they would just, we would refill the beds, but then hopefully, we'll start to see the, the decline there as we up our contract, put more kids on ankle monitors, but again, more money for ankle monitors means more money expended. But again, more money for ankle monitors means, um, more money expended. So, um, but we're looking at that especially in the new fiscal year to, to raise that and get more kids out if we can.
Okay, and then item twelve. Is a recommendation for funding, uh, via transfer from reserve to capital for, uh, an amount of ten thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars. That says the fourth floor chiller motor.
Yes, that's just for the watch list. I just wanted to update you guys on that. Um, that is for the fourth floor. Um, again, it is, Esther Brock has been able to Band-Aid that up until now, but has told me it will not last the summer. So, um, that's something that it, he's having to manually regulate, um, and it will not sustain. Um, when we get up into ninety-plus degree temps, so, um, that, I, I just wanted you guys to have that, put it on your watch list. Um, he is aware that we will need to continue to Band-Aid it. I knew me coming and these asks are high. And so I, that was one thing that I told him absolutely, because it's only my staff on the fourth floor. So, um, we'll, we'll make it through however we need to, um, to get, to get us through to July.
Now, earlier when we were talking about item ten, the reimbursement for the money spent on the dishwasher, the twenty-two thousand. Were you saying that we go to capital to pay for?
For the detention chiller, I have multiple. It's, the chillers are kind of like the hot water heaters where when one goes out, they're all put in the same time and so then that domino effect because of the additional strain on the others. Um, so as we've had, as we've been Band-Aiding, um, the two and making the repairs on the detention chillers that, that we have had funding for. Um, it's kind of put additional strain on the others and so we're seeing that domino effect with those now.
So that's one that's actually out?
Uh, it is, so it is the control system that maintains that chiller. Which goes over three classrooms, our library and two, and helps with two of the actual units. The control program is completely gone. Esther Brock is having to manually adjust. And you can only do that so much, um, because the control system is what also regulates within the unit. The, all the automatic things that happen within there. I'm sure I'm butchering his explanation of this. Uh, but he can only manually adjust so much. He cannot manually adjust the internal controls. So the fact that, that the programming is completely down, there are no internal controls for that. Means it will not sustain because it can't regulate itself.
So this is the first chiller to attack.
Correct.
I know that you've had several ARBA projects, capital projects. Was this one ever discussed on the HVAC?
We requested the, um, control program for the entire building and it was not selected to fund.
That, was that on ARBA or was that CARES?
No, that was ARBA.
It was ARBA, okay.
Yeah, it wasn't selected.
Do you remember, was it because it was deemed ineligible or?
No, because the jail did the exact same thing. It was just by the time we, we submitted it towards the end, after we saw the jail submit it. When we saw the jails, Esther Brock said, holy cow, we're gonna need that too. I didn't even think about that. And so we put in for it, but at that point, funds had already been allocated and ours wasn't.
Okay, and you still have the numbers and everything for that?
Absolutely, I can get it updated.
And it would, it was more than just one.
It was for the whole, it was for all of them, because we're gonna see this happening with the others. This isn't just one that will be.
So it kind of makes sense, if there's any way to swing it, to do, when they're all end of life. And we know that in the next year or two, you're gonna replace all of them. If we can find a way to do them all at once and everything is installed by the same people on the same system. And you can do your test and balancing and everything off of new units instead of some old and some new. And then we get them all on the same warranty period.
When you submitted that, do you remember roughly how much it was total?
I don't, not off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
Let's, let's hit the ground on that.
I will, I'll get an updated quote and we'll get that resubmitted.
That was gonna kill me.
I had thought about it, but I, I kind of thought with us going once and then saying no, I didn't want to go back and be like, hey again, can I please add this? Um, but no, I'll, I'll absolutely do that.
Brandy, do you have a problem with that? Taylor, do you? I, I'm asking you guys because all of our offices are on policy and governance, which, um, makes recommendations on those ARBA dollars, so. Okay, so do you think at this point, um, we already have the fourth floor chiller on here?
Okay, I just wanted to give you an update on it.
You're saying we should put the other, the M and O and the salaries on the watch list or? Kind of what I'm thinking.
One, it's just a trailer.
I think the, the twenty-two thousand on the other, that's a little bit different, because that's just a reimbursement of the other. Now, if you need that twenty-two thousand to pay for something specific, then I think that specific thing would go on there. All right, is there a motion to add fifty-five thousand dollars, uh, to the watch list for, uh, juvenile detention? Uh, food and utilities as well as a tw- uh, twenty thousand dollar line item on the watch list. For salaries for juvenile. Got a motion, do we have a second? Got a motion, second, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hannah. Uh, item thirteen, discussion possible action regarding recommendation to transfer an amount, I think, see two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars. General fund reserve to employee benefits fund to pay claims for FY twenty-four, twenty-five.
You just strike that.
Okay, is there a motion to strike?
I'll second.
Hey, i- if we don't strike it, does that mean we're only gonna have to come up with two twenty-nine? Okay, we got a motion, second to strike item thirteen, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Ayes have it. All right, moving backwards in time. To item. Three, discussion possible action regarding any items currently on BBT watch list. Is there anything that anybody needs to go over? Other than the items that we just discussed?
I have a question with the watch list as we get to the end of the fiscal year. Is that? Has any of that been included in the estimate needs going forward, those things, what we were just talking about?
That would be up to individual office in the department, I'm not sure. I will say this, the watch list dies with the fiscal year, so we start a brand new one for July one. And if someone needed to roll something over, they either need to address it in their estimate needs or ask to put it back on next year. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm just.
It's kind of a working document that. Just for the year.
I just wonder if we don't set ourselves up to be surprised by these same things next year, we can just zero out and start fresh. My guess is, if they're to the fiscal year, these things don't randomly go away or resolve themselves. Just wondering how do we account for that?
I know normally the watch list, I don't carry, carry step over to the next one, so it's a clean slate. I mean, it would take another vote around this table to add it to a watch list for next year.
Whether we vote on, what I'm just saying, as a matter of practice, whether we vote on it or not, those things are still there. And it seems.
Really, yeah.
Trying to think of a polite word for it, silly, to. Wake up July first and go, well, what do we have?
Technically, people should have removed them if they didn't need them by now. But I don't feel like I can just go in and delete them without any action, but that's really what should happen. And if they were putting on the estimate needs, even more celebration, ask to have it removed, knowing our situation.
Okay, um. So moving on, item four, discussion possible action regarding departments FY twenty-four, twenty-five estimate. Well, actually, before we get into that, let's go ahead and go to item six. Discussion possible action regarding general fund revenue projections for FY twenty-four, twenty-five.
There was a mix-up in my, uh, in my department about the attachments with the attachments. So both that are attached are incorrect, but you do have in front of you the correct one, we did print that. And then I do also have it, um, available on the screen. It says on it, with purchasing, it's got a circle. The, the ones that are attached are incorrect.
But this is an estimate and needs, what we were talking about was the general fund revenue projections. Item six.
Well, we've got the wrong attachments with the wrong agenda items.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So.
What, do you wanna go with the agenda language or the?
But I do also have, uh, I do have also able to pull up the revenue projections. But yes, the attachments were switched also, so I'm hopeful for that.
Okay, so the one that says with purchasing, what agenda item does this go with?
Technically, it should go with number four, is my understanding.
Regarding departments of like.
But I do have the revenue projections updated attachment available to be presented also.
Okay, and let's, we'll cover that in a, in a second, since we're talking about this. What changes were made on item four, um, the clerk's estimate and needs? Jennifer, can you tell us what? What change you made?
Uh, the first thing I did was on the, um. The, uh, revenue tab, it's the, um, down, more, up, you're just a little higher. Around here, uh, I had a better estimate since we got more in, uh, actual, I had a better estimate of where our reserves should be. So I did that as long as I was updating things. And then on the salary tab, which is. Um, we have the salaries now shown as they, as they actually are, and we made the adjustment down and roll up. And then for clarity, we added the line, instead of being rolled up in the department quotes. We actually separated the grant writers transfer and that's the annualized, uh, salary for that. So we moved it down to show that. And, um. Uh, and you see, you can see also the salary increase for, um, Marissa's position. Although she does not wanna take the budget for that, so if you go scroll up to the, the page with the, yeah. We're asking for the same salary, the only difference, uh, down here is the year's worth of, uh, fringe benefits, that kind of stuff. And then you go down to the M and O, we divided it up, so we took half. Of the salary increase out of M and O, down a little further.
It's, it's taken it's.
Here, that's half of that increase. And these numbers are what we presented before, where we just showed you, we shuffled around because purchasing was using a different code than we were and we decided which one to keep. So this is half, and then you go down to capital and there's the other half. And so the, uh, increase on here really is just annualized, uh, benefits for rolling in, uh, purchasing. And you'll still eat some because, uh, like my addition to medical and the benefits, all that is not even included in this. We're just gonna, we're, we're trying to just absorb all that.
Anybody have any questions?
I still do. Um, on, it's gonna be this page. Your net appropriations by XY sport should match what Munis says. So, so did we miss formally doing a carryover from purchasing to Munis at some point? Munis is saying, what are the figures?
Well, this is, on paper, we, we put it all together and I do have a copy without that. Um, but on paper, we put it all together so that you guys could see, visually see that going forward. We are only asking for a little bit of a difference in the benefits, an annualized amount of the benefits and even the salary increase. For Marissa's position, she doesn't want that to increase the salary. So we took that out of M and O and capital, and this way you can clearly see it. And in order to check the box, you were asking for, as far as that goes, I do have a copy where it does not have. Purchasing included in that, but we felt we had to include it this way because if you go with a flat budget. Where's purchasing?
Well, we would address that, but I think you have to have this more match what Munis is saying, but it's, it's fine.
Right, that would be, right here. If you.
I have it, it, but you're saying this is the one that's right and these are wrong, so.
Well, yeah, those were, yeah.
Yeah, the net amount appropriation.
There's ways to address that, but you've gotta start with what Munis is saying. I mean, it wasn't a true appropriation during the year, that's what I'm saying.
Right, and, but to show the.
There's a way to show it, we could, or we could, we, we know that purchasing has come in, we know that, that's something we would take into account on flat budget.
So, does that, the net appropriations that's up there, the three point four two six, one thirty-eight? That is not what Munis is showing?
No, it, that is purchasing and, uh, county clerk together because we are one now. And so we put the numbers together.
So you pulled the Munis for net appropriations for.
For both.
Clerk and for the purchasing office and added them together to get to that.
Same as, same as the actions. As, as expenditures and all that. We, we married everything together just so that we could show. Exactly what our requests are for next year, um, and to make sure that if there is a flat budget, it, it's just a number.
What should have happened is the balance in purchasing, you should have had an, an agenda item to transfer the appropriations during this year.
Uh, we can do that, this is not something we were aware of, so, and it, it wasn't done before. It was only, the only thing that was transferred was what had not, had not already happened. Is all that was.
When we, when we've taken departments and added before, there's always an initial transfer. But then there's always some over here in the budget and you just transfer the rest.
Okay, all right, we'll look into, into doing that.
So let me make sure I'm correct, on the net amount appropriations, on all of those line items. You took the hundred percent of the budget that was given to the clerk's office. At September supplement, so the total budget and the total budget for the entire year of purchasing. And marry those to go there, okay? That's what I thought you said. Now, going back to your budget request worksheet, what were you saying about the purchasing benefits?
Well, because it came over not a full year, uh, that's, that's just the difference here. Instead of taking it out of M and O and travel, we're just leaving that because, I mean, we're gonna have.
But it should be there for the whole year because you said that you.
Is, yes.
But you put.
But over here's not. Well, because if you go to the salary tab, go to the salary tab, uh, that'd be down here, just on the computation on here. Um, just the way that the formulas all work, so this was purchasing, this was the transfer at the time of the grant writer. Um, and just for the way the formulas all work, how times it for the whole year and, and all that, it, that's why the, the benefits.
But what I'm saying though is, if you put in the benefits for the full year for the clerk's office. And for, for the full year from the purchasing department, then all of that should be in there for the budget. So you shouldn't need any more in benefits than the two of you guys got for the entire year. Am I missing something?
The difference you're seeing is the annualized ask for the next year.
I get that, but the annualized. You already had that full annualized amount because you did it the way you did it. If you would have done the budget the way Christie is saying, which would be kind of separated out, then you would have the annualized portion. But since you put a hundred percent of your budget from this year, plus a hundred percent of the budget given to purchasing for this year. It's already annualized.
And pulling it out actually is higher on that, but that also is the difference. But I have that here, if you wanted to see these, to, to do that.
I just wanna work off the one that's gonna be signed and submitted.
Almost, almost any of them need to be got, if, if anyone was hired, um, any of these that weren't a full year, everyone's benefits had to be adjusted on this spreadsheet. Almost all of your estimate of needs that were handed through here, it was, it had the same exact part.
I, I, yeah.
But it was already budgeted, and you moved it from purchasing to your budget, so that took care of it that way.
Well, except the math. Now, we can go in and hard code it, I was just making, that was just the.
Jennifer, so if, if the transfer from be, from benefits into.
I can explain it a little better, so show me down here, on part of it anyway. See like this, there's math in here showing that's not a full year, right?
Yeah.
And then you come over on the other side, and now it is a full year, which is another one of this right here is added into that, that's a part of it, plus the retirement amounts are different.
But it isn't a full year in fringe here, cuz you said you marry both full budgets.
So if the, if purchasing would have never been transferred to the clerk's office, and you guys would have asked for a, you, you're saying basically you're asking for a standstill budget, except you need the extra for purchasing that you didn't get when they were transferred in, right?
Uh huh.
So, if, if purchasing would not have been moved over into the clerk's office, we'd have two estimate of needs. One flat for you and one flat for them, and there would be no increase. But what you did was you took the revenues from here and added them all onto this new estimate of needs. So all of the expenses for a flat budget for purchasing should be reflected in your revenue numbers annualized for the entire year because you added all of purchasing, not just from when you got the money actually into your account. You said you added the entire budget for the year for them.
Right, but it, it's, I don't know how to explain it, it's on the formulas, it's, it happened to almost everybody, it's many, so we went in and we were, went on the budget worksheet, and we did a negative, or the person, the department did a negative in there that was in the formulas, which a few people mentioned saying the formulas looked a little odd, that's why. It was to hide that because, because some of the formulas on here, the way it's crossing over, it's just not, it, it's not working correctly. And that's how it falls out on there. And part of that is the, like the salary increase for, um, the position, right, we're taking the difference of the actual salary out of them and O and out in capital, but we're not taking out the benefit portion of it, so that's part of that. Plus the partial, partially your this, which became a full one here, that's also included in that. Now that it's annualized. Because that person wasn't there a whole year.
I get it, but.
It's not, that, that wasn't for, for mine, that's just the person who wasn't there.
Was that a new position?
It was someone who had been hired and was then being covered under family that wasn't before. But it, not for a full year, this, if you do the math on that, that's not a full year. And then on this side, now it's.
So, but, so you've got that listed as a, basically a new position last year, new position, was that one?
It was a filled position, an open position.
Was that a, from purchasing, or was that from your office?
I have to go back and look.
Because I, I, I get the formulas, that, I, I think we've got some issues there. But when I just look at this page that has your revenues, it says that between the clerk's office and the purchasing department at October one, after we did the supplement, that fringe benefits, purchasing and the clerk's office had a total of nine hundred and two thousand six hundred fourteen dollars to handle the benefit expense for those two departments for the entire fiscal year.
Right.
And now what you're saying is you need nine hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars to cover the exact same people for the exact same time period.
Right, and it, it's rolled up in the formula that it's like, I mean, I can go in there.
But it's not a formula, it's, it's actual real numbers.
Papers are doing it, I mean, it's what the, it's what this is done, and it, it happened to almost everybody.
Okay, but, so.
And, and nobody questioned it until hours, so.
Well, it's because these don't match with the Munus numbers, that's why, that's why Christie was asking this, and I'm trying to get clarification here. For all of, and I'm not saying if you need more, you need more, but if it's just a formula issue, then do you actually need that more? That's kinda the question, because the annualized hundred percent for the entire year benefits for your office and purchasing, you needed nine hundred and two thousand six hundred fourteen dollars for those employees for this entire fiscal year. And it looks like you're not gonna have to use all of that because it's showing a lapse of twenty four thousand dollars. If you're asking for the same benefits for the same people at the same rate for the same period of time, it should be the same dollar amount.
Okay.
I, I, I may be missing something, I don't know.
Well, I'm, I'm just, I'm not sure how to explain it any differently, so.
Any other questions? Okay, um, without objection, the chair will ask the clerk's office to make the updated county clerk one set of need, estimate of needs a, or record. Alright, now let's go to six. Discussion possible action regarding the general fund revenue projections for FY twenty twenty five. And I don't know what I did, I, I tried to print this, but it only printed like half of the page. But if we have that big enough, I can probably.
See, I don't have, I have.
Are those the attachments for item six?
Actually, no.
This is the most recent one you sent me, is that for that?
That is what the, this.
I don't have that one.
That's the spreadsheet.
Yeah, I don't have that.
And I just think.
That wasn't on the attachment from, from Jennifer, right?
So, um, this is. Um, I think Albert sent over the actual revenue sheet that shows the.
That's behind it.
This is, but.
The other one I've got.
Yeah, that would be the other version, it's the same one, I just did the adds, the.
It's, but not right now, that's cool.
So are the attachments on the agenda?
Do you have copies of this?
Uh, no, I do, I do not.
So, hard to attach it there. Are the.
This is what's attached.
This is what's attached.
No, right now?
On screen, yes.
Yes.
What, what agenda item is?
Six, and actually four.
Uh, attachment on four.
Okay.
That's what I'm just, okay.
There's six pages and that is not part of it.
This, that right there, look.
This is.
Oh, that is, yeah.
Out there, one before.
Not the one before, yes, okay.
Off the break.
But no, I don't, this was sent to me, um, just before the meeting.
That right there, yes.
I thought that didn't have an opportunity to print anything. I didn't print anything cuz I thought that was a working document to this, but I misunderstood if you're supposed to have a printed copy of that. I thought it was a working document where you discuss the recommendations, I'm looking at the revenue. So, that's why I sent the link.
This one's attached. Well, let's, let's take, revenue comes before that worksheet in this point, so let's address that.
So it looks like a hundred and twenty four million eight twenty two seven sixty one? Which is a five point five million dollars less than.
Yeah, but at this point last year, in the spring, we were at a hundred and twenty million, so we're good.
Yeah.
If that's.
Yeah, I do, I was gonna ask this, um, what do you guys think about, I mean, we don't have to make the change for this year, but for next year, I think having a column that shows what our projection was for July one, because here it's got the amended budget, which would be October one, it's got the actual revenue through three thirty one, and then the year-to-date projections to get through the end of the year. But, so that we can kinda compare July one numbers for this year versus July one numbers from the previous year, does that make sense?
I understand your statement, but I think you're.
Would that not be helpful?
I mean, I just printed off a copy of last year's, just to get the baseline, but really, you're really comparing your amended budget to where you're starting July one now.
Right.
So.
Which is the down five point five million, but like you said, we were at one twenty.
Yeah, I just always look back at last year's and just kinda go, okay, that's not too bad, I mean, that's better than. The last page of this attachment has it on there, Cody.
Page six, then all the way up.
I, I tried printing this and it's all like funky.
The adopted budget, yeah, but it's up, see the one twenty dot com, that is our adopted budget. That's our July one last year, so that would be your comparison now. Ask and you shall receive.
Okay, thank you. I've got Marcy's document, now I can see it, this one here cut off like half of every page. I don't know what my printer must be.
Yeah, where's your printer?
Probably, I probably put the wrong settings in my printer. I can't get it to staple.
Stupid printers.
I know.
I know.
Alright, well, that's our number, one twenty four eight twenty two seven sixty one to start with.
What'd you say?
I said, what's the other sheet say, what?
Yeah, right, that's what we're missing there.
Okay, any discussions on this one? Agenda item six, the revenues. Okay, and this will be on budget board this month, right? The revenue projections.
Alright, keep going.
Please do so. And, and that doesn't take a recommendation from us, and that generally gets on there.
Yeah, I think it's.
I'll just copy it for what we used last year.
Yeah, I think it was the April eighteenth meeting last year. Okay, moving right along. Six is, six is done, four is done. So five, discussion possible action regarding follow-up questions, late any twenty four twenty five estimate of needs have already been presented. That's kinda where we start working on our worksheet. So, can you pull up that document that said you got it right before me, there we go. Can you go to the bottom and see where we're at? Five point three million dollars over, which is.
No, it's just a little. I'm curious if the reserve line has something in it, I'm guessing not, okay.
Not on the, yeah, finish, since it's over, is my.
Right.
Which is not surprising because when you look at the revenue projections of one twenty four versus what the amended budget, which is what all of our estimate of needs, if it's a standstill, would be what we currently have, there's a five point four million dollar difference, and so that's where we are. So if we're going to do a standstill budget to start the FY, we've gotta cut five point three four nine million out. Somewhere, somewhere.
It's been many, 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 many years, but when we've been in this position before, we've done just a ten percent cut across the board to start, or whatever that percentage is.
You're right.
It's kinda how, when we've sat here like this before, but. Is the transfer amount, looks a little down. Oh, we, see, the transfer is already in there. We're really worse off than.
Transfers are on column C. Of what they've done. I must pick them up, I don't see them, I. Oh, yeah, push go just a little bit, that's the section with the transfers.
Oh, okay, 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 good.
And then the projected, uh, transfers in the thing called D next to it is what we put on the, uh, the other paper that we turned in. At a call, it's like.
Up on general government, was that number reduced to reflect the standstill budget for the trust? Or did that include the, their original ask?
You mean the jail? It matches the last presentation that they provided, I believe is. It did, up in the general government.
Yeah, so the thirty three million?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I just went to that seven million dollar increase.
Yeah, that's why I was wondering. Can you pull up the estimate of needs, can't see for that?
So, column K F, so those are the requests for everybody?
Uh, column, column K, it's just a formula that adjusts, so it, you've got, what the ask is from everyone is column D. And then there's formulas, yeah, that encompass, okay, it starts with D.
Right now, D and K will be. Right now, D and K will be the same.
Add or subtract, right now, yes, yeah.
Right, and then as we add or subtract things from it.
It may not be as bad off, funding.
It depends on, I mean, Jennifer just said, though, that general government has the last presentation from the trust, which would have been the thirty-three, but I don't know.
Where'd that increase come from?
Didn't Kelly send you the latest general government she had? She said she did. Did she?
I mean, whatever she sent me last week is what I have. Which is the last time they accepted.
It might be the same.
What I think will be handy, can see if you can, what, what Danny used to do is he had the estimate of needs that we have received available, so that as we're going through these line items, we can pull them up and look at them instead of looking at paper documents and trying to fill that up.
I didn't know we were gonna do this today. Um, my idea was that we would do it how we did last year, where they would drive, they are remoted into their computer.
Who's they?
Finance. Where they can make the changes, since technically that's not my territory.
Yeah, no, 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 that's, 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 that's fine, just whoever's working this screen needs to have access to the estimate of needs.
She can remote in now if you would like her to.
I, I think it would be helpful for us to see what that, uh, general government estimate of needs is.
Four.
If you just wanna, Jennifer, if you just wanna do it fast.
I have a thirty-three, six, ten, two, ninety-seven. If I work, work down there on D.
Yeah, there's one under that, there's one that's. Yeah. Is it three, is it one? Two or three, then you're probably two. Oh, she's doing, I'm gonna.
I'm reading now.
I think that is the.
Day in coffee, if you're still watching, send me a text.
More.
Call me. How's cooking today?
Good.
Did I say twenty-five? And is that completed? Is my needs completed? I can't read anymore.
Yes, that's what it says, form completed.
And then general. One ten.
One ten, general government.
Only one, or is there a recent date?
That one's about fourteen.
Okay.
It is. And on that one? Thirty. J A.
Six point nine million increase, that's the old number.
Is it? Excuse me. And that's the.
It is the old number, yeah, that's not the new number.
There's a new one?
Yeah, they presented an updated estimate of needs last week. It's thirty-three million and change.
That's the last one I have. Yeah, she was sending out.
County commissioner should have, but only been the one that she had updated.
She gave you all three. Three, three, six, ten, two, ninety-seven, forty.
Is that that?
Yeah. This is updated. Then that's the one that was presented, that's the one that she printed out and gave to me. So, is that what you've got? Thirty-three, six, ten. The only other thing I know to say, she changed it before she printed it and brought it to me.
Well, I remember saying, when we build this, if you would, just go ahead and take the general government and put in the number that they presented, right? The thirty-three. That's what we discussed last week.
The one I have in my records over there is gonna be what she gave here.
No, I get that, but I was saying, when we were building this document, I said, if you could, not you, but the clerk's office, go ahead and look at the general government and reduce that jail to reflect their current amount, so that we can see what we're dealing with.
Okay.
We hadn't submitted the, this one, oh, this one, or the S C C, we are still missing those. We didn't, we didn't see them until today.
You did receive commissioners with.
Okay, hang on, hang on, hang on. So, we received the jail trust's updated estimate of needs.
Ninety-seven.
Right, and what I had asked last week was, hey, when you're working on that, the budget worksheet, go ahead and reduce the general government amount by the increase that was in there for the jail trust, because they're not asking for that. And then we could have Kelly Thomas adjust it and submit it.
Right, and I had asked her to look at that, and there was a new presentation. And I got the documents today.
Without a change, she didn't have to change.
If it, if instead of forty, it's thirty-three, that will bring us down below the five million.
Well, that's what we were hoping.
Right.
That's what we're going.
Yeah.
Let me see what the latest. And.
Thirty-three, six, ten, and change, I believe.
Yeah, thirty-three, six. Glasses, go ahead. Six, ten, two, ninety-seven, forty.
Yes. Or we go back to that, just for temporary, go back to that spreadsheet.
That's what we need to do, is just take that six.
Plug in this.
Six, nine, seventy-two, pick it off, so we can see where we're at.
I'm not sure how to get to. You have it open, I wonder if it'll be read all the.
No, that's in meeting files, that's in.
Do you hope Kelly.
That's general government, the most recent one that she's given.
Maybe, let's say resume right there. That should be it.
Yep.
Nope, roll on.
Right, well, they can't, you see.
There's only a few of carrying around. We haven't.
The lower.
Yes. Yes. Thank you. So, this is gonna be what she printed and gave to us.
Yeah, I don't think it has the lower number.
I thought it was county commissioner, because that's what I.
Yeah, no, it, it doesn't have the lower number, and that's why last week I said, let's just, when we're doing the worksheet, when we're working the worksheet, go ahead and just take this number, that increase out. That way, we know what we're dealing with. So.
Right, so what I have as far as paper is correct for now.
Yeah, but Kelly needs to resubmit it. Yeah, but I figured it would take her a little bit of time, so that's why we just. Okay.
Of course. They're gonna blame. Can't handle.
So, let's just go down here.
Just go, just go over to the six, nine, seven, two, go all the way over, because they said they weren't gonna ask for an increase, it was gonna be flat, right?
Okay.
So, go to the six, nine, seven, two, hang on. Go to the six, nine, seven, two, and copy it, and then do that and paste it into the adjustments line on the other spreadsheet.
Oh, sure, we can do that.
They're asking even for less.
Yeah.
A hundred thousand less.
Well, well, there's not a jail.
No, you do it in general government. Row seven.
You show them if you want, so you make note, just to reaffirm.
Yeah, but that's not the total.
He's like, column C adjustments.
That's just one line. Oh, what I can do.
Right. Yeah.
Is D.
I, I, no, because I've got it right here. Thank you, though, it just, it just reaffirming that what you have is.
So, what I can do is take the new total. And put in the total. Unless it was. Oh, I see. Do they pay special?
I think, Cody Reed is saying in column C, the blue column, H. C just does that.
Try to lock her formulas down, hang on.
Yeah, just.
I have to manually, I think I have to manually type it. I know, yeah, it didn't, it didn't change her totals, I think she locked them in.
No.
It didn't.
Who's, no, her totals are, those totals are still wrong, so you just need to take that six.
Oh, I see what you're asking now, the difference. We're just trying now.
Yeah. And it's actually, Christie, did you say they were asking for a hundred thousand less?
Yes. That's temporarily put in.
You got those.
Because we'll have Kelly Thomas submit a new general government estimate of needs with the other dollar amount, and then we'll get it fine-tuned and adjust those lines when she gets it, but just for now. You need to do that over in column H. Adjustments.
Oh, just put it over there.
Put it over in H.
Right.
There you go.
Column here, let's see where we are.
And to Christie's point, we should actually have a hundred thousand dollars more down there, but we're, just for starting out, we're fine.
Okay. Yeah, so now we are one point six on the, if we were to fund everything.
If we stay flat, we can start the year out with one point six two percent reserve. Which is what we need to do. Yeah.
When was the last time we had to do the ten percent back? I don't even remember.
It's, it's before I got here. We've never done that since I've been here, that's.
And actually, it wasn't when B T was meeting all the time. It's when the clerk's office would just come along with the amount.
Okay.
Just say.
What time I've done it.
And I'm just doing that ten, it was like three or four percent. It was when, it wasn't when B T was, and B T started in, oh, four, oh, five.
Yeah, I was saying, it's, it's not part of B T, I've never seen it. Okay, so, um, whoever's driving, Jennifer, you driving?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, if you would, go back up to where general government was. And let's just, let's work our way down here real quick. Is there, as we move down, are there things that we need to either pull out from a budget that we gave last year? That was a one-time expense that we don't need to do this next year? Or are there items that are requested from an increased standpoint that have to be done July one? If so, we need to make those adjustments here for our recommendation. If there is none, then we can just move forward. With it like it is.
Are we trying to get this done by ten tomorrow? If so, I would just leave it as is, maybe some heavy lifting for September. I mean, we all know that there's like some officers that need, you know, salary back, because it's, uh, and just, you know, it could go up or down, but you have enough to get through September.
Right.
So, it's up to you on timing.
Right. Well, we do need the updated estimate of needs for general government, that way we have the exact dollar amount for in here.
I mean, we've got what they presented. We can make the change on this.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and do that, then, let's make the exact change.
Okay. What they presented last.
Let's go ahead and pull up the general government estimate of needs.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, so what is that, forty million? Forty-six, ninety-eight, what, I have forty, one twenty-four?
So, we just need to.
Well, my calculator won't put the four in there, too many numbers. Alright, so we're gonna be four cents off, and then what was theirs?
Thirty-three million, six hundred and ten thousand.
Yeah.
Two hundred ninety-seven dollars and forty-seven cents.
You said forty-seven?
Forty-seven cents, yeah. So, then put this all up here.
And two nine.
Point, it was. Was it six, two ninety-six points?
Um, two ninety-seven point.
That look like it's supposed to.
Yeah.
We usually round it, but, yeah.
Difference of one sixteen, one eighty, one fifty-three. So, then go down to the bottom and see what the total budget is, and take that forty-one, four ninety-eight, two ten. And replace the general government. And then take your column H, adjust here. Now let's see where we are at the bottom.
Let me see camera's room.
No, 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 that's fine.
I put one point six million.
Yeah, so we still have a hundred and thirty-eight, eight forty-two, we want to just add that to the one point six, so do one point seven three eight. Now, now go down and see what the total amount was. Because we want that bottom number to be zero. Yeah, it's like forty.
One zero. One zero.
It's eight forty-two.
What was it?
That's okay.
There we go.
And you go up.
Back to the top.
So. Hang on, this, what we have right now.
There's something on it.
So this is recommending the full request of estimated needs, not a flat budget.
Request. Yes. Right. Need to.
We need to make those adjustments, so basically in the adjustments column, take in H, put what is in M right now in H. And that should make it what the current amount is, right?
We just want to subtract out all the asks.
Oh, I see what you.
Because right now, for instance, on general government, it's showing that we're funding three hundred twenty-one thousand and fourteen dollars more. So if we just go over to the adjustments and put three twenty-one oh one four, then it should be the same amount as last year.
Actually, we have a little round.
It need to be negative.
Yeah.
There we go. There we go, now we're gonna have more left down in reserve probably. One point two five.
But see, we need to change our. Because we don't have one hundred and thirty, we have one hundred and twenty-four million.
Right, why is that?
That was the number I was, that I was given to put in there, from revenue.
Oh, yeah, no.
Um, we're starting.
No.
It's one twenty-four, it's.
That's the number.
Great. Then we're down.
Now we're gonna be back to.
So zero out the reserve.
Yeah.
Let's just see where we are. No, not there.
Over.
Oh, yeah. Well, don't we still have like?
I figure plug in for reserve or no?
Okay, okay.
Wizard. Oh, this one here, we have to subtract that out. Didn't it not subtract?
Our recommendation, if we just plug in zero on K. Forty-five.
I'm putting one on, it's coming, Jeff. Something's going on. Let's look at this, is it adding the?
Something's stuck.
Let's see if it's. The math is on the transfers, I can. Yeah. It's actually taking into account these transfers. So do I delete those out of there?
No, we need to try.
Well, we can lower them to what the current level is.
Okay, looking at this.
So, right now, if the numbers, if we're all correct up there, then we're needing to. Cut something or some things by a total of five hundred thousand dollars, and we'd have zero reserve to start. Which is. Not recommended.
Do we need to do a percentage?
Oh, across-the-board percentage?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know. Were there any one-time things that were funded? This year that don't need to be funded next year?
I still remember. Last year? We did up it at this time last year, but I don't think we can afford to now.
Maybe I'll do the, tell me? Yeah, we're at that bottom one.
Is it staring at you?
Okay, on District Attorney State, line sixteen, they're actually asking for less.
That's what I was gonna say.
So we need to take that formula out. It doesn't need to be a flat budget, they're asking for less.
Right, true, or hello, sorry.
It's line sixteen.
Attorney State.
I mean, any department that has a positive adjustment.
Right. They're pulling.
Oh, that's huge. One-fifth of the way there, woo-hoo.
That's valid.
Yeah. Uh, hang on.
That's a pass-through account, I'm not sure why that's.
Employee benefits supplement.
Yeah, that's, that's a temporary account, that's when, uh, we just gave them a million, and at the snapshot, it is where it came up with that, so that doesn't deteriorate.
Okay, yeah, it doesn't. Okay. No. That million just helped advance.
Find a couple more of those, would you?
Yeah, there we go.
I know, we're good.
That looks better.
That's the spirit.
Okay, here's. Here's what I think, um, we might want to consider doing, is take that one point three, I think that is probably okay to start out the fiscal year in reserve. Right, so if we, if we stay flat. Except for those that ask for the less, we make that adjustment down. And then move the one point three into reserve. And then have the conversation about, I, I know Jason, we've kind of talked a little bit on the, the benefits, funding the, um. The employer premium, if you will, instead of putting that in individual budgets, just doing that as a direct. And that would be, if we do something like that, that would be a recommendation to budget board, so how does this sound? Let's let the clerk's office go back with this document that we have, make sure that all of the numbers are correct. That, you know, that there's no errors, formula or otherwise, and let's come back here in the morning at nine o'clock. That way you guys have had an opportunity to look at the document, make sure that it's good, and we can consider the, making that recommendation as well as the. Um, employer premium that we talked about, that change in the morning at nine, that way, I mean, you got a lot of this stuff already knocked out. If we're gonna stay with a, a flat budget to start out July one, I think we'll, we would have time to hash out that before ten o'clock. So that they can get the item attached.
Why are you going forward back there?
I know generally the cutoff is, you, you want that hour, but.
Well, um, if the meeting's at ten, I can't have ten o'clock.
No, 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 I get, I get that, I mean, you need some time, but.
At least thirty minutes.
Okay.
Yeah. I can't, I can't wait until ten, because then it won't be properly posted.
Well. Okay. Well, but what you could do is have an agenda item on there, discussion, possible action, uh, regarding BET's recommendation for FY twenty-four, twenty-five budget. With no attachment. Have all of the agenda items that you need without attachments, and if we can get it done in enough time so that you can attach our document, that's awesome, and it'll be attached. If you can't, that's fine, we can just hand out the document.
And it would be this one correct? So just that item.
Well, it's usually that one, and then there's another document that breaks it out into each department, salary, benefit, um, travel, immuno and capital. Yeah, Christie's.
I think it's just. I just need to see what it looks like.
Yes. Yeah, so that's what you guys will need to look at, as well as that budget, the BET worksheet, you'll need to make sure that that is reflective of what we have on the worksheet.
Yeah, I just have to go make the adjustments, because this is actually pulling from this tab. Except for the changes we just made.
Right, yeah.
So, we estimated our revenues to come up with a hundred and twenty-four million, four million of that is our interest. And, you know, we pledged that last year to the new jail, right on the top. I don't know if.
I think what we'll need to do is, because this time last year, that was part of our recommendation as well, but the idea will be the, the first four million from September supplement. If budget board wants to make that part of the jail cost, then we can just replace that four million with the, the four million here. Does everybody?
Follow.
Follow what, if we have four million, so. Yeah.
Let's polish up this seed corn speech.
Seed corn's being used.
But yeah.
We did three and a half, we did three and a half last year to the new jail, for our interest.
Yeah, but we are using.
I just wanted to bring it up to be prepared for questions when we're presenting this, I can, I can see an officer asking, you know. Where's our commitment to the new jail this year? Just long as we're ready.
Right, yeah, and I think that would just be like we did last year, we'll address that at September supplement, and be, because we need to make that, um, delineation anyway. Because we really can't count on that four million dollars to be part of our, you know, regular operating expenses, because we're not gonna have that forever. And that brings up an interesting point that we're gonna need to think about in the next several months, if not, you know, a couple of years. When we don't have that to include in our July one budget, if we didn't have that four million in here now, because we weren't gonna have that interest. What are we gonna do, or budget recommendation for July one?
Are you gonna give us some money?
No. I'm paying to the hundred and twenty percent of rep, we're trying to get what we have now. All right, any other discussions, or we all fine with recessing until nine o'clock? I mean, if we, I just say nine o'clock, because that's generally when we kind of start meetings around here, but if we need to start, we need to do it at eight, I'm fine doing it at eight, whatever.
I might be available in the morning, but I understand what y'all are doing, and you know my whole sport. You know what happens to your budget when you step that down. You become a plug number.
I'll look out for you.
Sure you will.
I know better than that.
That would be that.
How long is this gonna be? Do you do an hour, thirty minutes?
If we could have the document to review before. If we could have the document to review before, I would hope.
Yeah, it, it shouldn't be that long, I just think that, I, I want to make sure, it all depends on. How accurate the numbers are that are on the document right now. Because if there's an error in there to the tune of, you know. Million and a half or two million dollars, then it might take a little bit of time for us to figure out how we're going to make adjustments. But if everything is pretty well good, then I don't think it would take very long at all. Thirty minutes.
Could you do eight thirty?
I can, I mean, I'm here.
Everybody. Looks like eight thirty or worse. Is there any business that anybody wants to take up related to the other agenda items that are on here? If not, is there a motion to recess until eight thirty AM? Hang on, just a second.
We don't have that side for you.
We've got V O C C. Morning at nine, yeah. Eight thirty, hopefully we're.
Yeah.
We're done. Okay, is there a motion to recess until eight thirty in the morning in the V O E room?
Second.
Got a motion, second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I said that we are in recess.